All right, here we go. Welcome to the April 3rd, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have Father Isaac giving the invocation. I'll have you approach the podium.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Hallelujah, Father, we thank you for all your gifts, especially the gift of life, this time together. We ask you for the grace and strength to know and do your will. We thank you for your continued prosperity, protection, safety, and we ask you for continued guidance to achieve justice and peace in our beautiful town. We ask this through Christ our Lord, amen, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Father. City Clerk, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Lampy.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Connor.
Present.
I mean, seven present, zero absent. Seven, zero.
There, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, yes.
So I have the tax fees. D. Davis, fifteen oh two David. C. Moore, five oh seven Ellen. And L. Harris, five four ten, yes.
Thank you, Jody.
And if anybody else wants to, let me know.
Thank you. All right, next, we have a proclamation. It's Drinking Water Week, May 4th through the 10th of 2025. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life our citizens enjoy, and whereas our municipal water delivers public health protection, fire protection for our community, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas the hard work of Muscatine's water supply professionals ensures a safe and reliable supply, including water production operators that ensure the safety and quality of our drinking water, and water distribution operators that maintain the infrastructure we rely on to transport our water, our drinking water, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend on. And now therefore, be it resolved, the employees of MPW be honored for their contributions for providing low-cost, safe, reliable water services to residents and businesses of the Muscatine community, and be it further resolved by the virtue of the authority vested in me, Mayor of Muscatine, I do hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th of 2025 as Drinking Water Week, and tonight, we have Brian from MPW to accept the proclamation and say a couple of words, maybe.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for recognizing the folks in the MPW Water Department for their hard work. Boy, they sure do work hard, and we pride ourselves on, you know, supplying a reliable, safe source of drinking water 365 days a year. It's not easy, but they put in the time. Like, for example, today, we had a utility strike down in Grandview, and it was part of our critical infrastructure, and, you know, we get the call, and I go down to the job site, and the guys are already there, they're already in the ditch, they're working with the contractor to make sure that nothing bad happens and that we can fix the problem, and nobody notices, and that's just the way it should be. We work behind the scenes. You know, I can also tell you that they work hard this time of year. It's not easy, but we have flushing to do, spring flushing started this week, and so the main purpose of flushing is that we open up every fire hydrant, and we try to pull out any buildup sediment, but also, another function is that we put our hands on every fire hydrant, and we make sure that it operates properly, we make sure that in an emergency, the fire hydrants work. And so, again, thank you for this proclamation, thank you for taking the time to recognize the folks, and appreciate it.
We appreciate it, thank you. Next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does Council or Administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda? Here are none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is seven, is Communications. Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that's not on tonight's agenda? And this would be an opportunity, if anybody did not talk about the taxes earlier, to come up and talk, but if you, do you have anything that's not on the, that you?
It's something about the budget regarding public safety.
Then you can head on up. Name and address.
Hi, Dan. Ann Brumbach, 112 West Sixth Street here in Muscatine.
Three minutes, Ann.
So, national average says that the fire department for a town the size of Muscatine should consist of approximately 68 firefighters. Muscatine has four, I'm sorry, 65. Muscatine has 48 paid firefighters. Police for a town this size is 62 to 80, and currently, with our police department, including our chief, we have 41 paid public safety officers. I know for a fact that, you know, from reading reports and that, that the calls for service have gone up. I spent 25 years in emergency medical services, I understand the ins and outs of it and how things are going. The last thing that I read on the budget was that there was a potential hiring freeze, we'll call it, for adding no firefighters, no police officers to Muscatine. I think that's a big mistake. The one thing that we never want to do is short-change our public safety folks. There's different ways that we can look at this. We could potentially hire EMTs and paramedics that aren't firefighters to cover the upstaging calls for doing the transfers to Moline, Rock Island, Bettendorf, and Iowa City. I can say for personal, personally, back in October, I had a stroke. I spent four and a half hours in the emergency department waiting for an ambulance to be transferred to the university, by no fault of their own, but we just didn't have the staff. So I would implore the City Council, when looking at the budget again, my previous comments about potentially other ways that we could save some money, on top of that, if we add folks to our public safety, we're going to take away from overtime, and we can also save money by hiring just paramedics and EMTs to do those transfers. So I would ask you to take that into consideration, especially the fact that we're looking at trying to bring people into the community, and I know when people move to a new community, they look at schools, and they look at public safety and crime. So I would just ask the City Council to please just keep that in mind and reconsider not having, you know, more officers and more firefighters, paramedics, because again, we are at the, below the national average, and the last thing we want to do is say, it won't happen here, because unfortunately, we're all subject to it, and with the world changing the way it is, we don't want to be in that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment tonight? Is there any Council follow-up regarding? Councilmember Osborne.
I'd like to thank everyone that took time out of their evening to come see us tonight. It's nice to see a more participative house tonight, and I think we hear you. I'd like to also recognize Council, I know this group has worked very hard to cut, and staff, to cut a little bit more than a half a million dollars from the budget already. I think what I'm hearing is, is we need to do more, we have more work to do, that we got some problems with staffing and safety, fire and police, that is currently in the proposal that, that folks are speaking out against. As far as the hiring freeze goes, I want to make that clear, I'm the one that brought that up. I really probably should have used the words freezing the headcount, not going up in headcount. And that was, that's my bad. I used hiring freeze, and that did throw a lot of Council off, I believe, and all that kind of stuff, but the point is, is, you know, if we're going to put six more people somewhere else, and even if one of those is a special hire and it has to come off the street, that means seven other positions need to be relooked at. You know, just keep the headcount flat. Our headcount has gone up quite a bit over the last 10 years, and our population's gone down 1% over the last three years. That's not going in the right direction. We're taking more and more cost and distributing it over a few and fewer people. That's not sustainable, but I do appreciate everybody's words. I want, I want you to know, this group listens. There are certain things we can't do certain things about, but at this point in time, I just want to be a little honest. You know, it's easy to say you want taxes to be flat, but it's really hard to come up with what services don't you want, because these two things are starting to go hand-in-hand at this point, and we need to be brutally honest about that. A lot of stuff on social media is saying, I want my services to go up, and I want my taxes to go down. That's like trying to defy the laws of physics at this point, so anyway, I do appreciate y'all.
Does any other Councilmember have a follow-up regarding public safety and hiring freeze that Ann brought up? And if not, then we'll wait until the end.
Okay, I do.
Okay.
I'm glad you got the care that you needed, I'm a stroke nurse by nature, so I understand. I can tell you that what you experienced at our emergency room is not a normal. I can tell you, I do sit on a task force that does the whole state regarding stroke care. I can say we're very fortunate in Muscatine that we actually have an EMS fire department.
Oh, and I don't, I don't fault the fire department whatsoever, and I don't fault Council.
Sure.
It was just.
Yep, well, and I think the thing is, is just to understand that it's like, we hear everyone, and we understand what you want, but as far as, I know, when they talk about the one firefighter, that we just kind of put a pause on that, and it was actually, it's somebody that's in administration, it's not one that's coming to your door to go fight fires, okay? We want you guys to understand that as well. We always, I can tell you, I think I can speak on behalf of all of Council when I say this, safety is our number one priority. So we understand what you're saying, and it's like, we're trying to make sure that it's safe. We live here, we feel, we understand what everyone's saying, and it's just like trying to figure out, okay, how do we make the eggs balance out, right? I know that was probably a bad word to use, but, so, that's all, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Brockert?
Uh, yes, there seems to be some confusion over the six FTEs for the dome. Actually, if you calculate a full year, full-time job, it's 2,080 hours. We have one person with 1440, two at 1440, and another four at 1440, which adds up to seven, I don't quite get that, but anyway, those aren't full-time jobs. It depends on whether a person wants to work 10 hours a week, 20 hours a week, 30 hours a week. There is no overtime involved, there's no benefits, no insurance, that's it, all you gets a paycheck. And Parks and Rec has taken out almost $40,000 from the budget on seasonal help to help offset those people, so that, that's a misnomer, and if you missed it the first time, here it is again. There has been a great deal of discussion on Facebook recently regarding the upcoming budget hearing for the 2526 city budget. I would like to clear up some misconceptions regarding what the general fund is and what it isn't. The city budget is comprised of several components. The general fund that budgets operational activities, wages and salaries, most of which are dictated by union contracts for police, fire, and the blue and white unions, purchase of commodities ranging from toilet paper to diesel fuel, legal services, city administration, buildings and grounds, public safety, animal control, library, and all of the city services we take for granted most days. The general fund is the largest component of the city budget and is the one most dependent on local taxes and most affected by the whims of the state legislature. There are enterprise funds with their own pots of money to draw upon based upon the fees each charge for services. Enterprise funds include ambulance, golf course operations, boat harbor, marina, soccer events, convention and visitors bureau, parking, collections and drainage, airport operations, transit refuse collection, landfill, transfer station, water pollution control, and stormwater. We are fortunate that in our enterprise funds, for the most part, are self-supporting, with the most notable exception being the marina, which is forecast to have a $45,000 deficit. What this means is that any improvements or equipment purchases are from, for example, the golf course, will come from Golf Course Operations Enterprise Fund and not from the general fund. Public Works gets funds from road use taxes that are earmarked for maintenance of local highways and the equipment needed to perform the work. Those dollars also come from the state and are based on a per capita formula. The local option sales tax, something else that the legislature wants to tinker with, is allocated 80% to the EPA mandated sewer separation project and 20% for road maintenance. There are also special revenue funds that include TIF districts, small business forgivable loans, computer replacement, police forfeiture, community development block grant, employee benefits, sewer extension and wastewater plant replacement reserve. In addition, there are other funds, including trusts for perpetual care and the Perpetual Care Interest Fund for Greenwood Cemetery, as well as special cemetery funds. The library also has special trust funds, as does the Art Center, Parks and Rec Trust, health and dental insurance funds, and a capital project fund. None of these have any bearing on the general fund. I'll admit that before I took this seat on City Council, I had no idea what would end to the city budget. After eight budgets, I can tell you that coming to you with this proposed budget has by far generated the most at times heated discussion and that we met more frequently. The sports dome has also generation discussed regarding staffing, and I just tried to clear that up for you. Let's be honest, we will have the largest facility of its type in the state of Iowa when it's finished by the end of August. We have one chance to make a good impression on those who will use the facility. We have budgeted and delayed hiring a supervisor for the dome, saving some money. Running this facility will take someone with a background in Parks and Rec who knows how things should be won, run, rather. In my humble opinion, cannibalizing an employee with no experience from another city department is a recipe for disaster. When the dome is established, it too will have its own enterprise fund. Currently, it's in its early stages and will require some assistance from the general fund, as we knew it would when its construction was approved, and I might add, we have been blessed with many community donations. The decision not to hire an assistant fire chief, firefighter, and police officer for the upcoming fiscal year was made following discussions with department leadership. It was not done arbitrarily. Public safety is our number one priority, and Council has the utmost trust in our police and fire leadership. To summarize, the city general fund budget and tax rates that we all pay is at the mercy of the state legislature. Cities around the state have been communicating concerns to the legislators regarding the negative effect that bills they have passed have had on cities, unintended or not. Recently, Councilwoman Gordon and I, and the city administrator, attended a local leaders' day in Des Moines, organized by the Iowa League of Cities, which started with a meet-and-greet for local leaders and their state representatives and senators. Hours were no-shows. What we did find is that our concerns are shared statewide and that something has to change, and soon. Muscatine has had to find $500,000 to cut from its budget. Des Moines had to cut 17 million. Next year's budget will necessitate cuts for Muscatine up to a million, which means that services will be impacted, and anytime I have asked the question of folks on Facebook, what do we cut, I get crickets. So think about it, folks, we are trying, and we are trying hard. Thank you.
All right, the following items are considered to be routine by the City Council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Councilmember so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes Item 10A, Items 11A through C, Items 12A through B, and Item 14A with bills totaling $2,99,252.74?
So moved, Louis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Louis, and a second by Connor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. All right, we have four public hearings tonight. The first one is public hearing on an amendment to Title 10, Chapter 26, Section 2 of City Code to promote residential infill by relaxing side yard setback requirements for certain pre-existing very narrow residential parcels. Now is the time to, for the public to comment. Here are none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Councilmember Lampy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is Public Hearing B. It's a public hearing on an ordinance amending Title 8, Chapter 1, Section 4, and Title 8, Chapter 10, Section 2 of the City Building Code that would remove the need for the submission of engineered plans for post-framed buildings that are less than 1,440 square feet in size. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here are none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is a public hearing for the purpose of hearing community comments regarding the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the new Musco Sports Center. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here are none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne, and a second by Councilmember Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is Public Hearing D, is a public hearing on the status of the Community Development Block Grant-funded Downtown Revitalization Project, and before we get into any public comment, Jody is at the podium to do a presentation.
It's really short. So, I'm Jody Royal Goodwin, Community Development Director for the City of Muscatine, and I'm here because we have a CDBG-funded project, the Downtown Revitalization Project, that requires a second public hearing. We're going to review the status of funding of the Downtown Revitalization Project as required, and then open it up for public comment. The public hearing is required by IEDA because we're using CDBG funds, and there are two public hearings required for the project. One is prior to doing the application, which we did back in late 2022, seems like a long time ago, and then the second public hearing where we're going to talk about these last, these six items listed up here, and where we're at. So, the project. The project is a facade program to improve the building conditions on the north side of the 200 block of East Second Street. There are nine properties included in the project, that's down from the 11 that we applied with, but there are 203, 207, 209, 211, 217, 219, 221, 223, and 225. And so, you can see those are outlined in blue on the map below, and then that's a before picture from when we submitted the application. The funding and expenditures are one of the required pieces to be covered, and we received a $650,000 CDBG grant. The city committed $250,000 in facade program fundings that comes out of the Tax Increment Fund that was set aside to do exactly what we're doing, only we leveraged it so that we could get a much more significant project out of it, and then the property owners are actually providing $420,000 in private investments for that. So far, we've expended about $915,000, which is 75% of this, includes 75% of the CDBG funds, which is just under $490,000 of that 915. What have we done so far? I think we've made a lot of progress. Again, long time coming, but, so, the project is substantially complete at this point, and it's about 73%, so we have completed asbestos removal, installation of the new windows, new doors and hardware where they were called for, repair and replacement of historical glass, both vitrillite and leaded glass, so the vitrillite is the black glass on the flipped-out furniture building, as you can see there, and then most of the painting, carpentry, and masonry work has been completed as well. And I just have an extra thing of pictures, it doesn't look pretty, but I wanted you to see some of the progress. And so, the work to be done, so we're actually, because late last year, some structural issues came up in a couple of projects, in a couple of buildings, structural repairs are not 50% done, aluminum storefronts are kind of more of a last thing to get done, awnings is in the wrong spot actually on the list, most of those are actually complete. Tile, and in this case, we're talking about tile work primarily on the entrances to a few of the buildings, and then electrical work that is associated with the outside of buildings, and then the things that are more than 50% complete, again, are the painting, carpentry, finish work, and masonry. So, again, these are some of the pictures of what needs to be done yet, and as you, so Geo Johns, that building is, that's one of the aluminum storefronts, and then obviously the upper area still needs to be done. The tile work at Liv Leo is actually, still needs to be done, because you can't really see it in the picture, but it's uneven, and so there was discussion about, I was just out there the other day, and they were talking about how they're going to fix it without having to take it all out, because if they take it all out, it becomes concrete, so you lose the actual historical nature of it. On the left here is our most recent substantial surprise. On, on the Geo Johns building, when the column repair was thought to be more cosmetic, they opened it up and they found some more substantial issues in there, which will require us working with 201, which actually isn't a part of the project, not because they didn't want to, it actually changed ownership, and we actually ran out of money before we could get that far down the block. But, so that's our newest structural issue that we're working on right now, I think I skipped over actually the structural issue at 221 and 223, which I did want to touch on, because it looks really questionable right now. But, so, when they opened that up, they found some failing masonry work, and that we called in a structural engineer, so it's a, the building is safe, we've got the structural shoring in there, and the repair has been designed at this point, it does add a substantial cost, so we're kind of working through some of that pieces. Hold on, can I go back? So, the 221 and 223 are the pictures on this slide, and so... So, the 221 and 223 are the pictures on this slide, and so, working through, they'll put up a new column, obviously, to remove the shoring, but also there'll be a wall that gets put back in there that separates the two doors, and to kind of offset some of those costs, the eaves and stuff will be done different. When they opened it up, they found the tile, which is always questionable, what condition is it in, and so they've determined that most of that is salvageable, and there's a way to work with what's there to kind of encase things in appropriate materials that doesn't, that is less substantial cost-wise than had originally been planned. But, again, the whole point of this is retaining the historical nature of the buildings. So, that will be done, and I'm not really... If you have other questions, you're welcome to ask me, but I don't want to go into a lot of detail about it if you don't want that. So, one of the things we have to talk about is what has changed from the very beginning. Like I said, the cost came back in, came in almost $200,000 over from the construction estimate. So, we had two buildings, two property owners withdraw 205 and 215 because of the cost that they were going to have for that, and then 229 had other stuff going on, so they withdrew at that time. Then 203, because we had them withdraw, we had additional funding that was available so we could push it down farther to the west end of the block. They had been involved in the discussion and the preliminary designs before that, just when the bids came back in, it was just more. And so, what kind of change orders have been done? You guys have approved through change order three, which included the removal of those buildings, but also some additional vitrillite, again, on the flipped-out furniture building, replacing rotted-in Boeing wood at the laundromat. The temporary shoring, as well as retaining the historical ten at 221, and then light fixtures at various places where, like when the Boeing was changed, when the ceiling tile was changed at the laundromat, they changed the type of lighting that was used there. So, they're pretty minimal up until that shoring issue in both sites. And then the pending issue is the shoring at 203. And so then, this is a picture as of today. As you can see, I think the windows made a huge bit of difference, and then the paint really does liven it up, but I will answer any questions you might have, but I think we fulfilled our requirement for CDBG.
Is there any questions for the public? Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
All right. Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Louis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Louis.
Second, Gordon.
Second by Councilmember Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. All right. Next item is 17A is a first reading of an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 26, Section 2 of the City Code to promote residential infill by relaxing side yard setback requirements for certain pre-existing very narrow residential parcels. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, Councilmember Ginder, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
First reading of an ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is B. Is a first reading of an ordinance amending Title 8, Chapter 1, Section 4, and Title 8, Chapter 10, Section 2 of the City Building Code that would remove the need for the submission of engineered plans for post-framed buildings that are less than 1,440 square feet in size. Is there a motion to approve this first reading as submitted?
So moved, Louis.
Second, Osborne.
By Louis and then Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Ginder.
Aye.
First reading of ordinance approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is C is a first reading of an ordinance amending Title 3, Chapter 5, Section 10 of City Code to allow for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Musco Sports Center, which is public hearing C. Is there a motion to approve first reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Ginderich. Is there any discussion with council? Councilmember Osborne, Gordon, and Louis.
There's been a lot of conversation about this in the public, everything ranging from, "Ooh, it's going to be a bar with how many bouncers do we need, and what about the kids", and all that stuff. This is not the only place. Pearl City Station, you know, other facilities we have, this is, this is an events-type offering. It's not a bar, it's not going to have a staffed bartender there, no bouncers, no disco balls. It's, if you want to have a wedding there, you know, that kind of stuff. Anyway, that's all I got.
Councilmember Gordon.
I was sort of going to mirror that same comment or ask Rich. This is something we already have, so Rich, if you want to come up and clarify a few things, to Jeff's point, we allow beer, champagne, and wine with a special permit or permission or fee?
Rich Kleins, Director of Parks and Recreation, thanks for asking me up here. Let's start with where alcohol is allowed. Riverview Center, Pearl City Station, you can have beer, wine, champagne, and it is by permit, and you pay an extra fee to have that there. The police are given the permit, the police will inspect if they need to. The golf course, you can have beer, we sell beer, wine, or champagne, we're licensed to do so, our staff is trained. Yes, the dram shop liability insurance, we pay for and cover. So, those two models are used. If you wish to have a special event on the riverfront, the code currently allows for a beer tent, a sectioned off area like the Almost Friday event, that they can sell alcoholic beverages. Nowhere else in the park system, on city property that I know of, can you have alcohol. Maybe the art center allows for wine at different events, I don't know that, but not you, for example, a park shelter, you could not take a six-pack, definitely not a keg, that would be against the code to do that. So, what we're asking for is to change the code to allow for the consumption and sale of alcoholic beverages in the Sports Dome. It's a like service to our competitors in our region, it is not a bar, I don't think there's a disco ball yet. There will be events, there will be casual alcoholic beverages available to people, and the staff will be hired by the vendor, which will come after, and if this is approved, then we look for a vendor for concessions. They will be trained, they will be licensed, the liability will be on that vendor, not on the city.
Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome.
Glad you clarified that, because like Jeff said, there's been a lot of confusion, and some of it might just be funny, but it's just something we already serve and have for many years.
We have, and I'll say with the dome, there's a lot of confusion there that this is going to be a tax liability. That is not every model we see, this will be a revenue producer, not a liability for this community, not just directly for the revenues coming into the dome, but the business community for people traveling into our community. So, when we look at revenue streams, the model we've used to model this off of is the same model we've used at the golf course, which is an enterprise fund, which means we develop and foster several revenue streams coming into the golf course, same with the dome. One of those revenue streams will be a percentage of those sales of alcohol to help offset the cost to operate that dome. And again, it's protecting those revenue streams and developing those. Does that help, I hope? Okay.
Councilmember Louis?
Stay there, Rich. Mine, actually, I've had a couple residents call me, and they're like they were just totally against selling alcohol, and their whole point of selling alcohol is the kids. The thing is, is yes, there will be some kid use of that, but there's also some adult use. Am I correct in that assumption?
No kids will be using alcohol.
Thank you very much.
Let's get that straight, that's a fact. So, if, I don't have the picture of the Sports Dome here, but the Sports Dome is a very 122,000 square feet, it'd be the largest indoor sports dome in the state of Iowa. We're not competing with Tbk, that's a whole different entertainment and retail district. However, we will benefit from their pricing because we will be less, and people do look for the bargain, so they will want to come here. The footprint from the dome is a full-size football field, full-size soccer field, regulation NCAA softball is available there on the same footprint, and then you have six pickleball courts down one side. When not being used for pickleball and when special events are in there, the pickleball courts will be covered, that will be a convenience area where people will gather, teams will gather, we camps. The alcohol and consumption will be allowed in that convenience area and around the concession stand, it will not be allowed in 80% of this facility, so there are controlled areas of where it will be. We did have several community meetings, and Councilmember Gordon was at some of those to hear the discussions from the Park and Rec Commission on alcohol. It is a polarizing topic, it was all over the place from citizens that came to the meetings and the commission to have it or not, and in the end, the commission did weigh in and did want to allow it. We can always take it away if it's not working, folks, that can be retracted by a simple act of council, so it's not a forever thing, okay?
So, we could actually, what I'm hearing you say, we could actually have an arena football team to come and play in our arena?
When I went to one of our sponsoring groups that asked how the dome was going, they asked, "How is it going?". I will tell you that everybody would like to use it all the time for everything, and that's wonderful, that is great. We have, we will announce shortly that we'll give the local groups and organizations within our community 30 days to pick dates, to decide what dates. If there's conflict on those picks, we'll have groups come in, flip a coin, draw from a hat, we'll look for compromises to get it scheduled. Once that is complete after 30 days, then we'll open it up regionally, and then out of state, in-state, so forth. I have right now 17 groups that have asked for multiple weekends to schedule special events here.
Awesome.
So, yeah, pretty cool, pretty cool.
Awesome. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, thank you for supporting the council. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
It's exciting, guys, it really is. This is just getting so much momentum. We're looking at a mid-August, late-August grand opening, so come on down and enjoy with us.
Exciting. Councilmember Ginderich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
First reading of ordinance approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is D. Second reading for an ordinance amending Title 8, Chapter 1, Section 4 of City Code to mirror the state historic building code. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy and a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none, Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Second and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. That was totally a mouthful saying all that, by the way.
You got to repeat it.
Yeah, you got to do it again.
Here comes another one. Next item is F is a request to waive third reading and adopt on second and final reading of an ordinance to vacate indeed an undeveloped right-of-way to the adjoining property owners located at 1719 Pearlview Court and 1715 Pearlview Court. Is there a motion to waive the third reading and adopt this ordinance on second and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Connerd.
We have a motion by Councilmember Connerd.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Ginderich. Is there any discussion with the public? How about council? Here or none, Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Ginderich?
Aye.
Second and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is G is a resolution setting a public hearing for April 17, 2025, on the proposed Amendment Number 1 of the city budget for fiscal year '24-'25. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second.
Connerd.
And a second by Councilmember Connerd. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Ginderich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is setting another public hearing for April 17, 2025, on the proposed city budget for fiscal year '25 and '26. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Councilmember Ginderich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is a resolution amending the Muscatine City Council invocation policy. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
Did you skip one?
Nope.
You got G and H, okay, sorry.
Nope, you're fine. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Councilmember Lampy. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none, Councilmember Ginderich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is K is a resolution to award contract for the Lake Park Boulevard over Mad Creek Bridge Deck Overlay Project to Boulder Contracting, Inc., an amount of $165,504.30. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Connerd. Is there any discussion with the public? How about council? Here or none, Councilmember Ginderich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Second and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. That was totally a mouthful saying all that, by the way.
You got to repeat it.
Yeah, you got to do it again.
Here comes another one. Next item is F is a request to waive third reading and adopt on second and final reading of an ordinance to vacate indeed an undeveloped right-of-way to the adjoining property owners located at 1719 Pearlview Court and 1715 Pearlview Court. Is there a motion to waive the third reading and adopt this ordinance on second and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Connerd.
We have a motion by Councilmember Connerd.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Ginderich. Is there any discussion with the public?
should have shared my comments on the budget at an earlier time.
You can do it now.
Uh, but, uh, we're spending more than what our revenues are in our city budget. So I am a no vote on accepting the city budget. My second item is, uh, Ken LaRue, many of you know Ken, is a owner of non-emergency transport, a fellow trap shooter, friend of mine. Ken has got the ball rolling in a very, uh, I think a very good way for a youth trap shooting team here in Muscatine. At this point, it's a middle school, high school type age, uh, age group. We want to do fundraising. We have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar, uh, you know, signup fee. We want to try to do the fundraising, like I say, so that, uh, uh, our shooters can, uh, participate in fundraising and, uh, you know, have their shells and their targets paid for. We have a board of directors, Mike Manjoin, Brad Kissner, Ray Satello, Kenny LaRue, and myself. Uh, so Kenny's really trying to get this, uh, up and running in the right way. We're all going to be certified coaches and have to do the training and, uh, you know, we're affiliated with the Scholastic youth, uh, shooting program, uh, you know, nationally known and so forth. So uh, if you'd like to contribute, Kenny LaRue is the guy to get in touch with at Non-Emergency Transport. If you know of a young man or woman that, uh, would like to trap shoot, uh, it's a great sport. I love it, you know. Uh, certainly get ahold of, like I say, the, anybody with the board of directors. Kenny LaRue especially, myself, Mike Manjoin, Brad Kissner, Ray Satello, and Kenny and myself. So any questions or anything, why, get in touch with us. Thank you, Mayor.
You just gotta keep on coaching, huh?
I love coaching.
Yeah.
As long as I can shoot, I love coaching.
Thanks, Coach. Councilmember Brockert?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone who came to our s- special hearing and especially for those of you who stuck around for this meeting. I wish we were this exciting and interesting all the time.
Councilmember Connerd?
Just a couple of things, Mayor, real quick. Thanks to Nancy for notifying me that my property taxes went up the most of all council. I'm gonna make a initial five-hundred-and-one dollars next year, so thanks, Nancy, for that gift as we walked in.
Start spending it.
Yeah. And also just, you know, looking back at the tenure history on our, on our tax rates in Muscatine, you know, the fifteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Holding that from two thousand and sixteen all the way to twenty-two, twenty-three, where it did bump up to fifteen ninety-seven. You know, it's good to see the two years after, the two years following that, it was back down to fifteen sixty-seven. And then this year, the proposal of fifteen-point-nine-five. I have faith in our city administrator, the council, our, uh, department heads, that we've already started working on the budget for next year. I think a little of us, bit of us were, you know, a little shocked this year of the deficit we had. We already know we're gonna have a larger deficit going forward. So again, the work's already started on next year's budget, and hopefully next year, we're talking about being back down in fifteen-point-six-seven. That's all I have. Uh, one more, it's just, the assessment is done through the county assessor's office, so if you do want to challenge your assessment on your home, please contact the, our county assessor's office and, and put that challenge in. And several people have had success in doing so, so I'd encourage everybody to do that. And whatever other tax breaks there were on property taxes, the senior citizen won, what age group was that, John?
Sixty-five and older.
And what did you get on that activity? How much was it discounted?
Sure.
All I know- Was that followed under, what's the name of it again?
Sixty-five hundred dollars.
Homestead.
Over sixty-five exemption.
The senior citizen homestead exemption or... My taxes still went up, though, Councilman.
At least it didn't go up as much, right? So if you are-
But I'm living on a meager fixed income.
In the ability-
You are aggressively involved in the employment market, and I am living on a fixed income.
He's got that coach's finger coming out.
Sorry about that. Hey.
Good thing we don't have a whistle.
I, I've been criticized for doing this pointing. I apologize for that.
I'm fine with it.
Technical over there, yeah.
Still not as high as it could have been, though. So I'd encourage everybody, if you're over sixty-five, to ensure that you're signed up for that homestead activity.
You really do, because I have had a couple of calls, you know, from people, and that has been mentioned, so.
Coach Gendrich says I'm done, so I'm done.
All right. Councilmember Lewis?
Wow. Okay. Um, couple of things. First of all, thank you for everybody who came. Know that we've heard, we understand. Um, this is, like everybody else has said up here, it, it hasn't been easy. This is probably, out of my, this is my fourth year. Um, this was probably the most time we've spent on a budget, really looking at things. And it's all, we understand, we're going through the same things. We're, we do this as a community, we do this as a team. And, um, want you to understand that we do hear you. Um, the other thing I wanted to state is, um, I'm sorry that when Councilwoman Gordon and Nadine and the city administrator went up to the State House, that the representatives and senators didn't come out. I can tell you, I did not have that kind of issue. I actually went up there on my own and, um, spent, uh, about a half an hour, doctor, or doctor, sorry, Kenny Tom, a nurse, Representative Cisneros, spent probably another half an hour with Representative Collins, did spend some time with Representative Kaufman, and, um, Senator Lofgren was actually in session that time, and he did, I left him a message, and he did get back with me, and I spent probably a good forty-five minutes on the phone with him. So as citizens of Muscatine, if you want to call them, they are there and they should return your call. Remember that we work for you, they work for you, they put their pants on the same way we do every morning. And I think we need to remember that. So, thank you for coming.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I do have a couple of things, too. Boy, everybody speak tonight.
You're fine.
Um, to mirror what some others said, um, I want to thank you guys for coming. It's great to see a lot of faces. I see some familiar ones. And two documents I want to thank Nancy Leek and her team, is you've got two documents that might help tell the story. So please review those and read those. One talks about our levies over the last ten years, eleven years. The other is how our dollar is spent in the way of city, county, schools. So thank you, Nancy, for putting those together. And then also providing an extra service and saying, if you wanted her team to run you some quick numbers, to have somebody do that and think that, or that's above service there, Nancy, so much. And I have something more of a fun thing. Um, I went to a Uker tournament that was a fundraiser for senior resources. It was a lot of fun. As I was playing, uh, cards with this older young lady. We were talking, and she watches the council. I'm like, Pat, I'm gonna have to give you a call out, if I remember it. So thank you, Pat, and Debbie, her daughter, for playing Uker and for watching the council, because we really appreciate it. Tell your friends and get our numbers up. So, thanks, guys. Thanks for-
Did you win, though?
Uh, no. Thanks for asking.
We were all curious.
But it was, you know, like, so many fundraisers around, you'll talk about yours. There's so many around town that are so fun and that are reasonably priced, and pick one and just go and have fun. I enjoyed it.
Councilmember Osborne?
We live in a great community. Um, let's not forget that. Uh, a lot of good things coming up. We got, uh, the Bass Tournament's coming. We, tonight, we talked about, Chris Anderson's already talking about the holiday stroll. You know, that's gonna be, wow, you know, uh, second Saturday, or, uh, almost Friday Fest is coming. This weekend, we've got Girls Getaway. It's been going on for fifteen years. Uh, it, it means a lot to the downtown smalls. Uh, it kind of kicks the season off. Uh, there's a, I think there's a Chinese practice. I heard that the first customer that comes in, you want to make a good sale, so the rest of the day goes well. The Girls Getaway is kind of that for the year, outside of the holiday strolls, the bookends, the things, and so. I want to encourage people to do that. Uh, we have a, we are a town that has so many good things going on. Um, there's also a plant sale on, in, uh, fifteen-ten Grand View this weekend. You can see the animals at the Discovery Center, uh, on Saturday. And, uh, and Don's got something to talk about. We'll leave that. I want to say something. Uh, Nadine did a really good job of giving the details. Um, she's excellent at that. I, I agree with her. Uh, we need the dome to go well. I think Rich shared some really excellent information. Seventeen organizations, multiple weekends. I mean, it's already almost booked. Uh, we haven't take, taken bookings yet, so you can't really say that. They don't pick out the dates and all that stuff. But, um, the dome's a good deal. Uh, if we don't keep, if we don't find a way to grow, we'll keep doing what we are, and that's losing population. We've lost one percent over the last year. Uh, that means we're just taking the services and distributing them over a smaller and smaller group. Uh, that's not sustainable. That said, um, and again, I do appreciate Nadine's, um, uh, very accurate way of looking at the budget. But I also do hear that, I hear how everyone else looks at the budget. Money out of my pocket. It's really simple as that. And so for that reason, I'm hearing that I will vote against this budget as well. I think we have, I will vote for that we do more work on this budget. That's all I got.
Okay.
Councilmember Lampy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, real quickly, uh, to echo some of the comments, uh, from that side of the dais. Uh, yes, as far as the senior discount, if you have not signed up for your homestead tax and your senior discount, if you're over sixty-five, so I can say that I'm part of that group. So make sure you get there uh, and sign up for that, uh, although it won't necessarily completely reduce or relieve your, uh, change that you'll see, uh, in the proposed budget, uh, it can help. Also, from an MPW, as John has mentioned many, many times, there's also a discount out there. So I encourage you as seniors to, uh, to get engaged, to go find those, uh, discounts that you can get to. So, uh, go make sure that you are out there, uh, looking for those discounts, that you can then, you know, help, uh, with your budget, because, you know, as we've mentioned, uh, it does come out of our pocket. It's not like we're spending, you know, um, you know, either, we're spending your dollars, and we want to be doing that as wisely as we possibly can. So again, we encourage you to go find those additional discounts out there, and we'll continue to mention those to, to help all that can be. Uh, on the other side of the things, nonprofits, uh, they are really the backbone of this community. There are a lot of really good back, nonprofits out there. Go find them, participate with them, encourage them, uh, and obviously donate to them. And one way you can do that, and obviously, um, near and dear to my heart, is Habitat for Humanity. Uh, this Sunday, we will have our soup luncheon at Wesley United, uh, starting at eleven o'clock. And, um, you know, I'm, uh, for probably about the tenth year in a row, I'll be supplying the chili soup for that event. So, uh, make sure you stop by, because, uh, if my chili soup all runs out, I get an extra little prize, uh, from our team. So, uh, make sure you use, do you, uh, select the chili soup. That's all I have, Mayor.
City Clerk? Chief Keys?
It's good to be back. So I appreciate all the support, uh, with the FBI Academy. Uh, I sincerely mean that. It was some of the best training in the twenty-two years of law enforcement that I've ever attended. Uh, it goes to show you how much you value the safety and security of the city and your public safety. So I truly appreciate that, and I look forward to putting it to you. So thank you.
City Administrator?
Yep. Um, for those in the room, uh, I want to share with you a little bit of the, a little bit of the plan moving forward in, in the future here. Uh, when we went into this budget, I referred to it as a stopgap at some points during the budget process, because we, we got to a point where we got the balance, we got to a balanced budget. Uh, we are under a time crunch from the state of Iowa. We knew full well going into this, this wasn't the budget that we wanted to present, nor was it the one that I wanted to present my first year here in Muscatine. Uh, what we will do from here on is it is hard to do the actual budget process and, and calculate and formulate, uh, cost savings measures in addition to do, at the same time, in addition to doing the budget. So uh, we have already started looking at what next year's budget looks like. We have already started to identify what we believe may be the shortfall if the current, uh, terms, I guess, if the State House pass. So we will be working on ways to minimize our spending, more from a study perspective of how it's going to impact services. Um, so I want you to know that it, it, we did take it very serious this year. There's a lot of stuff on our plate as the staff will, will be looking at to ensure that we can try and minimize what our revenue, or our expenditures are, knowing our revenues are probably going to be impacted again. So I wanted to share that with you, uh, so you know that we're not going to try, um, and do two at once. We're, we're gonna be at a position where next year, when we get our revenues, we have a plan in place, what that looks like for a million dollars down, a million-five, and probably two million dollars down in, in revenue. So we can start to, um, prepare ourselves for that. But at the same time, I have also promised this council, uh, if we find measures that we can save money in revenues now, we're, there's no reason to enact and wait for next, the next budget season. We'll start to do that immediately. So hopefully, we're coming out of the current budget that we're in with, with some additional savings and into the next one as well. So, uh, I hear you very loud and clear. Uh, a lot of my peers throughout the same, uh, position that I'm in are in the same boat that Muscatine is. Some are in worse shape than others, uh, but we're all, we're all trying to figure out the best format to try and save revenues, and that will, that will really have different implications on what that number looks like next year, but at least we'll have a plan going into it. And I feel that's probably the best approach that we can do, is be prepared, knowing what that revenue stream will look like. So when we get to this point next year, we're not trying to do two things at once, uh, budget process and a cost-saving analysis. So I wanted to share that with you folks, so you know what we're going to be doing up here. It will engage the council at times, um, as well as other measures that we're trying to do. At the end-depth, next week, you're gonna hear about a new housing development, uh, that we're gonna propose. That's the other way that we can get out of this, okay, folks? We have got to put houses in our community. It, it does a lot of different things. Puts a, a tax base not only for the city, but for the school and for the county. Uh, provides local option sales tax with more residents and, and more people that are going to use our businesses. So the housing initiative that we will start discussing and, and proposing, uh, is ongoing. It has been since day one for me here. And I'm excited, I'm excited for next Thursday night. So, um, what that looks like for this council and, and moving forward with a, with a new housing development, I think is a great progress, uh, for us as a city to try and increase that property tax role that we have and get more, get more, um, citizens in our community that'll spend money and live here. Thank you.
Well done. Um, I have several things I'd like to share. So one comment, I forgot who it was, um, was regarding, do we check decks, uh, for properties? Uh, we, we do not. Um, the county assessors will go do that. They'll, they'll either make a visit or they'll utilize drone footage or aerial footage, um, via the ByState airplane. Basically, they fly around and they get to see everything. That's the Muscatine Beacon. That comes from, uh, ByState paying for that as well. Um, Councilmember Lewis wanted me to remind you, if you are a veteran, um, you have a four-thousand-dollar tax credit to go toward, towards your property tax. So thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah, make sure you, you have to ask for it. So just make sure that, you know, there's, we've got a, sorry. We've got a, actually a VA person here in town, um, that if you feel like you're qualified for that, come reach with me, and I'll get you connected with him to help you get that.
Old post office.
It's in the old post office.
All right. So, um, talking about growth, uh, our city administrator, again, we're so glad to have him, uh, focusing on growth. So to put it in perspective, he is spot-on correct. This year, going into potentially twenty-twenty-five, or I should say, it's twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, there could be a potential of two-hundred-and-fifty-plus residential units. This is your apartments, this is your townhomes, this is single-family homes. So we are definitely going to grow with residential. Therefore, to Councilmember Osborne's point, we've had a decline population. We should hopefully see a spike in that as well. If people are going to move into these spots, it's gonna open up, um, some homes for other families, maybe uh, the first-time homebuyer to buy in Muscatine. And I know Jody has been doing a fantastic job, and Andrew as well, to, uh, help push this out as well. Um, on top of that, that's, that's tax value coming into our community. Another one, too, there is a, there is a whole host of items, too, as far as like, uh, commercial build, industrial. I mean, we have multiple millions of dollars coming into our community that are investing in Muscatine. That should be captured. We should be able to see that as well. So that's a great thing also. Um, to put it in perspective, as you look back, uh, two thousand thirteen to two thousand, or fiscal year twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen was, our tax levy has been the same since then. So twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, we did raise it just a little bit, then we brought it back down. So we, for about thirteen years, it's been pretty much dead flat. So you probably, and I, I heard some comments, too, and I appreciate it. So thank you, guys, so much for coming. But even if we keep our tax levy, and I'm not gonna speak for the school or the county as well, but for us specifically, even if we keep our tax levy flat, you're, you're gonna go up in cost because the assessed value of it. And I know, Mr. Davis, you brought up assessed value. Again, thank you. So from the assessed value standpoint, the city does not touch assessed value at all. So this is how it works. Um, so bear with me, there's just five little steps. It's not gonna be the ten-minute one I talked about the other day, so I apologize. So step one, assessing property value is January first of odd years. The Muscatine County Assessor estimates market values for all properties in the county, including those in the city of Muscatine, on January first in odd years. Also in odd years, the equalization of years and even years, uh, also takes place with new construction. So if you own a home, um, if you own a home that's three-bedroom, two-bath, in a certain area, we'll just say, and you have, uh, a half-acre lot, they're gonna, the state and the county's going to look at other places in the, in the city of Muscatine, and they're gonna be like, okay, how much is that house sold for? And now all of a sudden, if that house is like, let's just say, two-hundred thousand dollars, and everybody right now, like, let's say your house is worth two-hundred thousand dollars. But, um, Ben's sold for three-hundred thousand dollars, and someone else sold for three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and it's the same type of house, it's the same acreage, guess what? Your assessed value, Mr. Davis, goes up, even though you haven't touched anything at all, or updated anything. That's how that works. The city, we don't touch that. Now, step two is collecting the sales data from the previous year. The assessor compiles twenty-twenty-four sales data from Muscatine County focusing on fair mech, fair market transactions. So if homes are sold, again, in Muscatine's West Hill or rural county. Uh, this informs trends from residential properties under the Muscatine Community School District or city jurisdiction. Step three, compiling the assessment abstract. The assessor totals assessed values for residential, commercial, agricultural classes countywide, and submits the abstract to the Iowa Department of Revenue. This includes property tax, taxed, uh, city of Muscatine, Muscatine Community School District, and the county. So again, the three taxable entities come up with that overall tax levy, if that makes sense. Then with that specifically, there's an equalization. So the state of Iowa equalization check, it's every odd years again. The Iowa Department of Revenue compares the Muscatine County's assessments to its own sales study. Again, going back to sales, what properties are selling for, like properties, and comparing them all. So the last step is that the Muscatine County, the county assessor, has to be within five percent plus or minus to the Iowa Department of Revenue.